I'll start with the flag to the weekends.
States of America into Republican Party stands one nation under God, justice for all.
So the bulk of tonight's meeting, first of all, um, I think normally takes our minutes.
Voting to uh.
Okay. Uh, our representative is here from Serp Ed.
So I guess before I get started, could I just get a quick introduction to you guys?
I'm John Jagat and I'm here mostly representing the Taunton area Chamber of Commerce. So this is part of our area and I was asked to be part of this commission and um here representing, you know, seeing how we can against the economic development.
It's time to use commission according to uh bringing.
Our internal discussions before we really get um with the public. So guys are really familiar with SERP Ed. Um, we are the regional planning agency for southeastern Mass. So our mission is really to work with our communities to advance different planning uh goals, strategies, and create them in a way that is implemented in real life, in the ground. We're not talking like crazy lofty ideas that can be ambitious, but we really want them to be implementable in real life. And for the Dyson Economic Development Plan, our goal and our role here is to really listen to you guys. I like to think of our role in a lot of our planning processes as shepherds because we're not prescribing anything to you guys or telling you what it is that you need to do. It's about listening to what your goals and your priorities are in order to make sure that this plan really reflects that. We also provide technical assistance. Think data, numbers, maps, um, all the stuff that can sometimes be overwhelming um for the public and sometimes difficult to interpret, but we like to present it in a way that is user friendly um and serves both the town and the public. Um, creative support, we'll talk a little bit about this tonight as well when it comes to branding and how we want to present this plan to the public to make sure that our public presence online, virtual, in person, our materials all create this kind of cohesive identity that is easily recognizable and helps us at the time when we're doing all this public engagement. And of course, we're gonna deliver a beautiful, um, but really useful and um implementable economic development plan that responds to your goals, your priorities, um, and how you see the community. So I want to start a little bit with the concept of Dyson. You guys are obviously more familiar with the town than I am because you've lived here, you know it. Um, but it's multifaceted like many towns, right? There's no one thing that Dyson is. It's so many things. It's open space, farmland, it's it's natural resources, historic sites, it's home to family-friendly neighborhoods, of course, and obviously some areas and some commercial areas that we want to work together, feed into its culture, its character, and also its economic development. It think of job creation and the bottom line and if we made a profit and if there's surplus. Well, I like to think this idea a little bit further, especially when it comes to what we want to do in Dyson. Aside from creating opportunity, um, we want to address our weaknesses, but we also want to kind of harness our strengths and say, this is what we're really good at. This is what we want to build on. Um, push the envelope a little bit on, you know, going beyond just jobs and numbers and that kind of thing, but really think about how we can innovate and use what's already in Dyson to support our economic development goals, our priorities, and make sure that we're balancing a lot of these things. So I think more that we're balancing its rural character, its commercial opportunities. So we're not, we're not suggesting taking fields and turning them into districts. We would never suggest that. The appropriate places for small business development and take in those um innovation centers that are already here in town like Bristol Aggie that complement and harmonize so beautifully with the character of the town. So all of that is to say that this plan is really looking at building on Dyson's strengths, building on Dyson's existing characteristics and values in order to create uh an economic development plan that really creates activity around these areas and around these these elements in town. To developing the concept of this plan and how we want to present it to the public. Of this plan itself, we're looking at about a year and a half. Um.
Wait.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can share this with you guys for sure. Yeah. Um, so like I said, tonight is, I think of it as our soft launch. Uh, it's us, it's having a conversation, it's really establishing that tone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But as you can see, we have two public workshops. Um, that has in-person and virtual element, so we want to keep that in mind. I will give COVID credit for really um giving us an opportunity to expand public engagement. Um, I have to say we've had a record participation with online surveys, with Zoom meetings, um, and just really being able to get more from people at their. So let's go to this slide here. What we're doing today and what we're doing here. Um, I talked a little bit about that concept of where we want this plan to go, how we want to set it up. I'll talk a little bit about branding as well, and then I'll talk about next steps, and those are um more hard data, more baseline information that we'll use to really create scenarios for the future and what we can do as a comparison to say 10 years down the line, hey, this is where we were in Dyson, look at where and how far we've. So when I talk about branding, I of establishing um a visual message for that concept that I was just talking about. We want to make sure it is anchored in Dyson and it's people. So we really want to make people aware of this project visually and also know what this project is about. The project when they see it because it's going to be in-person and virtual. If they see a post about it on Facebook, I want them to say, oh, that's that's the Dyson Economic Development Plan. Obviously, they're having a meeting in a month or so. And when they see a flyer in the library or in town hall, that also is a trigger for that this plan is ongoing and, you know, active actively taking feedback. And also strategy lets us have a successful public engagement strategy. Um, there's nothing quite like having someone recognize a logo or a presentation and be able to say, oh yeah, I I'm gonna take the survey for that tonight or or something like that and talk about it with their neighbors. So this is a fun little um concept to design that we created at SERP Ed to kind of really illustrate where we were coming from with this idea that like, you know, so many things and all of those can feed into this idea of what our branding strategy can be. That's what we're kind of looking at here. Conversation here tonight is a way to get a sense for what you guys think, if there are things you like about it, things that you don't. So I definitely welcome all of that feedback. Ramp up this project to get ready for kind of public consumption. Next month, um, sharing a kind of data brief and summary of existing conditions in Dyson. So that's gonna take a look at demo data, market data, um, maybe dive into some more deeper information about um industries and um how we can harness them a little bit more. Thing planning that Dyson has already done, whether it's specifically about economic development or it's kind of like tangential and we can touch on it and kind of pull it into our our strategies here. And gathering feedback about that um data brief, get your ideas on it, what else you would like to see, if if there's anything that we need to push further on, and then we'll really start thinking about how we can kind of ramp up public engagement. So with that, we'll start um publicizing the website a little bit more. Um, it's not live yet, um, because we, like I said, want to establish that brand, and then we will open developing a survey so that way we can share with individuals and the public as this process goes onward. Um, I've using a survey as a way to revisit during the process itself. You know, it's a way to validate thoughts and discussions in person. Um, so I I really look forward to developing that, but also seeing the outcome. I'll be sharing this uh survey, I mean, this survey, this presentation with all of you. Um, and the project staff is listed at the bottom there with our emails. So if you feel free to reach out to us with any questions or concerns, I'm always available. Let me kind of open it up to you guys.
Can you scroll back to your drawing because you'd like to get some feedback on that?
Yeah.
There's the Verujo is in the top, a little on the left, I believe it looks like, right? Is that what you're trying to get?
Yeah, yeah, get some of that like farm sand culture going on, show show what it is, yeah. Here?
That's what that is, okay.
But if it's not obvious enough, we can also push that a little bit up.
Put a tractor in there.
I know, put something in.
Yeah, I I like that you've got, you know, Mount Hope in there, right? I mean, I think that's a representation of the Mount Hope industrial area. You know, with a little North Dyson all around it. That's nice. Yep.
So we might be able to recreate something like that historical. Um, I'd have to see if our uh graphically inclined staff can can take and pull that off.
Yeah, is it David Switson?
Yeah, it was like.
Well, when I'm doing this, I still have David's side. Okay, sorry, I was gonna be uh.
Well, I I don't see any.
It's I'm just looking at that reddish, large reddish building, which is the Mount Hope.
Oh, I thought that was like.
Yeah, that's Mount Hope on the city.
Yes, Chris, the trees.
I thought it was like, but I.
Yeah.
No, because she was like.
Sorry for that.
Out like a very tough, you see, so.
Oh, gosh, I see.
Oh, that's all. Oh, my own attention was way off. Okay.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, so down to the bottom is perp bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, we saw it from there, then you see Ante.
I'm leaving it out, but I don't know what else is in there.
It's red, it's a red town, it's a sock town.
Yes, sure.
We didn't know longer.
The logo.
Yeah.
You need to promote that.
Grasp that there. I still haven't, I've only been in town. That is better, but.
Because this is, you know, it's supposed to be an illustrative kind of like this is Dyson, you know, it's not, I wouldn't say it's geographically like accurate in the sense of where everything is, but it's picture, right? When we create this kind of plan, we have an idea that will pull different elements from this picture in order to talk about different aspects of it, um, different aspects of the economic development plan.
Yeah.
Close to one.
Is that the truth? There's I'm not very clearly observant. Um.
Yeah.
Terms of scale, that quote is too big. That's why I told the shout overpowering the quality of character of the end to me. I don't even.
So in that vein, it's just my thought, Brian did say the egg might be a little oversized as well.
Okay.
Good to see.
Yeah. Like the attempt to show how um wooded the town is.
Mm-hmm.
Took me a second to realize those are trees as opposed to more decorative. So I I doubt there's a way to commit to slightly alter graphic to just make it a little bit more prominent.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, make them more realistic and add some lines.
Oh, yeah, some more triangular ones. Yes, yeah.
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 Those are those solar panels?
Attention right now, though.
So do we want to revisit that?
Say it takes all hour, they're not the most. Yeah, they just have a negative.
Put a fence around it.
They have a negative connotation with them.
Put some lines.
Stonewall. We have Stonewall still.
Oh, like a stone wall going down one of the streets, that would be, uh, that would be.
Yes, yeah, Stonewall. Church or.
Senate chair.
Trying to show all of Dyson in the little one picture.
Maybe a logo.
Yeah.
A little bit more detailed, but the logo itself, just to convey things a little bit cleaner, is a little bit more simplified. Um, it's gonna be hard to shrink this logo down a lot smaller on say like a a document.
Okay, yeah. Okay, got it.
Yes, yeah.
Not even a year, so I'm I don't have any history, but I think so, you know, the so are the churches, the one on Horton Street and the one on Center Street, I believe there is one. It's historic. Yeah.
The Breckenham Church is the only one that's historic.
Yeah.
Dyson key and church on Helm Street.
Ah, Helm Street.
The one you go back against, yes, yes.
So it's like, I think kind of churches are actually more historic and have more of a value than this building.
Hmm, yeah, that's right.
So you like three parts, one that doesn't look like a church, it looks at.
Okay.
It just.
I I can, like I said, I can talk to our our staff person who created this.
Yeah, no, I know exactly.
And if if that's something that they can make into.
Like, you know, all like, you know, facets of different religions. I don't know. Are we okay with just showing the white wooden church? You know what I mean? Um.
It's a community.
The nation of light.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, okay, okay, good, okay.
Nice.
Otherwise, I'm gonna be instead of doing something like that, if we just took aerial pictures. This, you know, it's okay. I'm not, you know, and I'm just say my piece, that shows a lot of, a lot of things that Dyson has, but.
Would be.
But one thought before I forget it too is the water. It I guess different things that the water is large, seeing the large space, so it possibly could fit more things. If not that the water isn't a feature, but it doesn't have to take up that whole bottom.
Yeah, I also I also think so, two things. We do have, so SERP Ed has a drone program and we do have those and we are in the process of getting those aerial shots so that way we can include them and incorporate them as we put out this plan. So, you know, in presentations and all that. The reason we try to take this approach with the logo is because it creates more of like a, what I like to call like a friendly face to the master plan. It doesn't have to be literal. Um, and it also, when we think of this image, we don't have to feel like we have to cram everything that's in Dyson in in this image. We're taking, think of like the 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 top hits of Dyson, and if you put those on an illustration, what they would be. That's kind of what we were thinking with this process hitting on those major highlights. Um, I know there is so much more to Dyson than what we can fit in this single picture. Um, but we're thinking and are us is that it is kind of like a more friendly idea, a way to kind of incorporate color, um, instead of just having a straight kind of drone shot on on a.
And my piece. And also, if 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 we did think about it the other way, isn't, I've seen this on computers, I've seen where you have like a folding page that you can actually fold from, you know, pictures from one to another. Knowledge, the thing I know is a lot of. Say it, so. That shows as a cover sheet. And then inside there, we have smaller, you know, that people can actually fold to see what's available, what what's not available, what does Dyson look like, what's so, but it shows water, it shows buildings, it shows schools, it can show churches and it, I mean, I I'm sorry. You know, I mean, I'm just finding to think about what I want to say, but I mean, I guess this will be like an overview of what our project is about, it won't actually replace what Yes.
It's a logo. So it's sort of like, that's the um, the town logo. When we see it, we think Dyson too. I mean, there's the logo, but we want one for our economic development plan. And
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So when we promote it and people see that image, they they know that we're working on projects and that we want to maintain
Yeah, it's it's like a one line conversation.
Maintain the character of our town, and these are what is missing or could be featured. Terms of space, we were talking about, um, you know, just making room for other things, maybe make the water a little smaller so that would open up space for to be just.
I would, I would probably minimize.
This is the a logo for our plan. This is the kind of thing we're gonna speak on brochures for the town of Dyson. This is just for a the the plan, no, just for the plan they're coming up with. It's that logo.
Yeah. A brochure. My my point that if we have a focal point of the town.
Just like one.
One for a cover sheet. That we can actually get to something that shows water, that shows whatever. I mean, even even this bridge exactly that, but it would be a real picture.
Right angle with the right lighting.
Absolutely. Uh, I I'm not, I'm not knocking anything. It's not real. It it doesn't do anything for me. That's that's my, that's my point. And I'm just the one member and I I whatever you guys decide to go with and you agree to it, that's.
Say, and we could just put them side by side, as I really like. And I don't know if that's.
Get those drone shots. Um, so I I can check back and see when they plan on on doing those because we don't have those on hand currently. We tend to get those as the plan is being written so that way we can incorporate it in like presentations and and the final like document itself. Um, but I can, I can see what we have. I know in the past we've done um like map outlines with.
You know what? That's a, that's that's a decent shot of of something.
So is there any way to just have one, a major like focus on anything? Like this, this is what I'm showing you. I mean, just as an example.
That's just the bridge that it that, but it is, it is the town of Dyson Bridge. Well, Dyson. There was a a shot that picked up that along with a school and then bring it up to actually fit whatever we needed to to fit. We have a beautiful school in this town. You know, it's a beautiful project that we have there, and I think it's it's a a nice thing what different things in there. It'll be something that could bring other businesses into town or or, you know, the right.
I don't think a seasonal shot, though. The other problem is waiting for the the um first spring to come and to capture the field because as beautiful as that facility is, you know, you want to make sure you capture the natural cultural feature that, you know, they're filming from.
Yeah.
I also want to steer clear from just say focusing on like a school, for example, because that's not what this project is all about. It's about the schools, it's about our natural resources, it's about our commercial centers and focus on something quite like that. And I would also steer clear of using a picture as a. Focus on something quite like that. And I would also steer clear of using a picture as a logo. Um, it's not typically how we we do graphic design.
Okay.
Um, it's a great feature to have in the plan itself and we can try to play around with some pictures in some type of logo situation. So I I can bring in a couple options next time um, to show that that difference between an illustration that's again supposed to convey the idea of all the things that we're we're trying to do. Um, and maybe just have something more of like a a straight shot if that's what you guys are interested in.
This is just an idea and I I I won't be insulted. I won't be hurt if nothing of that happens.
No, I. I need to like see like and realize what they're trying to envision as well. Like I'm not sure. That has that practical aspect to what I think a lot of our residents will wanna see, if that makes sense?
That does. That makes sense. That is very good.
That's so I mean, I know that the Blue Joe is in the top corner. Like a lot of people will probably recognize that the mill as well. So.
Sorry, I'm sorry. The time is the residents don't. And put the historical, you know. Flying in the sky or maybe ducks swimming.
This helpful, was that?
It is. Yeah, yeah, definitely. The town, um, but so creates that idea of that bigger message that we're trying to get. The economic development isn't just that Mount. Right, business. Right, exactly. So do you have. Some of their characteristics that we could. In their town. Trying to think if we did. Did you Rainham? Yes. For their master plan, we highlighted their public library. We did a silhouette of their library. So you picked one focal point. We picked one focal point.
But that was for the mountain plan. It's not.
Right.
It's not a plan focused on economic development though.
Right, that one's very general. It covers eight different topics, um, from economic development all the way to transportation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, like I said, we can come up a couple different options. We'll incorporate those edits that I just heard today to this this logo here. Um, and you know, we can we can take it in a couple different directions. I have seen other towns do like a map outline with um, pictures inside. It it doesn't, um, we've tried to move away from that because it doesn't always translate well to smaller um.
Yeah.
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 Pictures, um, but like I said, we can come up with a couple different options.
That's helpful. Thank you, Lozad.
So I have a question. You talked a little bit about um, strengths and weaknesses and that sort of thing. So will you be like going through um, SWAT analysis with like the commission or what what are your thoughts? You're going to get that information?
So we are going to do a data sweep through everything that we see, um, all the previous planning that Dayton has. And that's what the data brief will be. It'll be kind of like a, here's what we found. Um, but it's not gonna necessarily say, these are your strengths. That's something that is going to come through um, data trends, like if there's a growth in this industry or you see um, a decline in another. That's that we'll we'll let the data tell us that, right? Then there are other things that are a little bit more what I like to call the softer side of economic development. That's where you guys kind of come in. Um, if you're looking for an enhanced like Main Street experience, how how would you guys see that? How would you achieve that? Um, so those kinds of like questions, kind of visioning, right?
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, I think one of the things like as we move forward is to really define as a committee or what exactly we are looking for to be able to sign to. So I mean, we so we've been existing, but since our goal by which. So I mean, I think we all have, you know, the. So like over the last four or five months, like we've all kind of shared different opinions of what, oh, you know, we'd like to see based on our realities, but. Oh, you know, having all that understood as a baseline for the commission in this project as well. Um, I think would be helpful. Like, so we have an idea as a commission where we're starting from what we want to see through this.
Mm-hmm. Do you guys have that? Is there is there, do you guys have anything written? Do you guys have like a statement or?
Where's, no, the audience know like we're like too new and. Like in this whole exercise is new for the town as well. So I mean, but I mean, really, I mean, I. I'll so I. But the. As. So at the end of the day, like before we everybody else, what they think, I mean, like I think through this process, it would be helpful, you know, to really think it into a bar group to make sure where. They might would do well on the same thing too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, definitely. I think that'll help as we develop the plan itself. Um, obviously.
Okay, so that'll happen as part of this process, can't it?
Yeah, I mean, we'll be here, um, guys at your meetings for, I believe, the next couple months.
Okay.
Um, just to share that information, get your feedback. And through those discussions, we get a sense for, you know, what you guys really think.
Okay.
And if there's any way that would help you guys formulate those thoughts on what you're looking for in certain areas of growth or like that softer side of economic development like I was talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would I would encourage you to either, you know, you can email me if we don't talk about it here.
Okay.
Um, just some way that we can have it um, kind of memorialized to say, okay, this this is.
Yeah, yeah, really understood what we're planning to do in this type of. Want to see through this as well, you know, I mean, we can regularly open to define it. Oh yeah, like I mean, but. Can send it to there if that makes sense.
Yeah. Data. Once we see where the what what the numbers are telling us, right? Because we're not, we're not making this up on our own here.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. Yep, yep.
Um, we're letting the data, the trends tell us what's going in which direction, how we can help it move forward if we want it to keep going in that direction. Um, and really see what either policies or incentives we can implement here in order to do so. Yeah.
She for me? So on your, you know, rough timeline, one of the things we. Mean about was, uh, you know, at our last meeting was we were talking about what should we budget to promote the town and that sort of thing. And we said, well, wait a second, we don't have our branding, we don't, we don't have the work that's gonna come out this year. So when is our budget cycle? Is it July?
Yeah, so we're planning for the next budget cycle now. So yeah, for twenty three budget, uh, which will start in July.
Okay.
So we go to the following year period. But even with that, like we're gonna be wrapping up this plan. So in the summer of twenty twenty three, I think you said. So like really, I mean, so like how would I do? So that we let, so like we see this process through for the first basically year. So again, so like at this point in the year going in through the fiscal year. And the launch mission, what. Oh yeah, like at that point, really being able to understand where we. Yeah, yeah, like I think like it's really truly a disappointment to talk about what we need as a committee because we're. So trying to define what we need and what we want to.
Oh yeah, no, I was just wondering if we needed to be thinking about. Next budget cycle, where would we be in this process? You know what I mean? So.
This year. Question is, is will this help us to.
Next year.
Maybe because really we don't even have a frame of what we would need to want. Yes.
Exactly, exactly. So that's the.
To help with, you know, the creation of a budget watch or permission.
Yeah. Yeah.
I see. Okay, okay.
So, you know, I know that you're saying it's gonna be summer and I guess what I'm hearing is that our budget process starts in February and March. Do you think there would be a year from now? Information, enough information that we'd be able to start to say, well, we should start budgeting for this type of promotional like safety or brochure kind of things. You know, or or reaching out to, you know, the greater community uh, businesses.
So let's go off for one sec. You guys, it's all done, edits are in, like it's stamped, sealed, approved. But workshop two, that's where we've kind of already fleshed out our recommendations. That's where we've put forth our ideas and where we want to like focus our energies and how we wanna implement it.
Okay.
So by workshop two, um, which workshop one, I'll backtrack a second. Workshop one, we expect between summer and fall of this year.
Yep.
That means workshop two will be, I expect, late winter, early spring of twenty three.
So that would, if you said by workshop two.
Yeah, that'll.
You've pretty much got your recommendation set and you're just looking for that. Nation, if you will, right?
Right, exactly.
And so maybe that works out just.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, okay. That's what I was trying to get clarity on really is how will that fit in our budget, like our annual budget? I think.
And and the good thing with these types of plans, I'll take my point of reference from the Rainham plan like we were talking about earlier. When we do implementation for these types of plans, it's obviously not something that's all done in like two to three years. It's it's probably long term. So that can give you guys an idea, okay, this year we're gonna budget for these top items, whether it be the brochure, the video, whatever it is that comes out in the actual plan that you guys want to prioritize.
Yeah.
Um, and we can establish that kind of implementation priority together. And I actually, I would prefer that because, you know, you guys know where the town is at with funds. You know where the town is at with capacity and the ability to carry out all of these things.
Yeah, okay, good.
So when this process is complete, um, do we. Then help us with the implementation process or is your work complete after we have the plan or highlight? It's detailed, you have the plan. Do you understand what we're gonna do? We we try to give you guys as much and as many tools as possible so that way you don't necessarily need us to implement this plan. That's the goal. It's kind of like giving your baby off and like seeing it go to college. Um, but you know, if you do ever need us, we are available. We have M A hours, which are municipal assistance hours in future years. If we need to use those to help or assist in some way, shape or form, um, there there are tools available. As for grant monies, we'd have to look into that a little bit. That's usually something that the town um, would have to pursue.
Yeah, yeah, like I mean, having all this information here, then we'll be, I mean, if there's like an infrastructure grant out there. Having all this information now will put us in a better spot to get that. But yeah, this is really a foundation plan that we can jump off of in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Actually, to that point, a lot of planning processes, when you have a document like these applying for.
Yeah, this is huge.
Makes it so much easier. Yeah, it's like, oh, look, we have community support. They think we should do this.
Great. Yep. Yep, yeah, good, good.
Yep.
So. Uh, there's a great, there's a great program uh, that documented by the Commonwealth called One Start. So then we can build on that. I like, I I can a whole host of areas, you know, for. For additional planning, funding, a whole bunch of things. So, yeah.
Yeah. You know, the expertise, all the guidance, um.
Yeah, no, I'm not worried about that. I mean, I think we. Uh. Foundation, but like it's not gonna just sit on the shelf by anything. So I mean, that's not my intention with it. I don't need anybody.
Zoning has to be done according to the business. So at the same time, if we're gonna be.
Document that we create would for us to, as we go through workshops and we run our vision and we get input from the community and we we create this that we hope to pass to vision to just, you know.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Zoning board or whatever other community that.
If we don't have that, I mean, right now, one thirty eight is multi-use.
Right.
And that's about the only area that. I don't remember exactly because I think back in. About that and I I don't know if it included some of uh.
Well, you're making me think and I just out how. No, I don't I don't know if you would recommend or if it's an an idea that we should consider where we go out as a committee and we take a drive through Dayton. Because to be honest with you, I know I probably over the um, you know, if I'm driving in Swansea. You know, a sign there, but to kind of, no, I honestly haven't ventured out like across forty four. I don't even know at what point it's no longer Dayton because I don't go that way.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Um, is that something that you would recommend or so that.
Basically, I I think I understand your question and so just I'm gonna interpret it in a different way. What you're trying to say is that you wanted to drive around and then see areas that you felt. Business going forward so that we can.
Well, I think it's sort of. You know, is our vision that we would like to have a main street? I think you, I I can't recall that we phoned that phrase. What did you say? Yeah. Yeah, like I know a lot of people want to see more main streets in their towns, walkable places, the cute cafe, what have you. If that's something, you know. Right, so here we can say and have this whole, and we might be thinking. Big, but as um, you know, a committee and we were to go to the zoning board, if we had already sort of scoped out the land together and together brainstormed and said, well, what's this? And you know the history of everything, like you saw.
I I don't know the history of everything, but I I've been on the zoning board for a few years now.
Well, you know the law, the play process, you know. I had. Oh, that'll never sell because of whatever or so that because otherwise how do we really um. Generate this this vision, I guess is what I'm, you know, like there like. So. At that picture, was that Mary's, that building? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I got, so you know, at one point, I mean, this. That I know not, I don't know we answer to. Um, I really don't know if that's still polluted, can it ever be built? How many years do we have to wait because this property is being.
Well, I I can. I tell you that on Main Street, there's very, very little that we can. Unless you get up to the top of one. that unless you get up to the top of one of Main Street. Some more land on the left. Zones residential, farming, uh
we, you know, company or anything there.
He says that, he lived close by, he'd obviously
I don't wanna be anything that how long just how do we go about, you know, making a plan areas. And we looked at a map in from this book, but
That along with the data suite that we plan on doing, we also consider land use. Obviously, you can't put something that's not allowed, um, if you're trying to expand business. So that is a very good point. Uh there is gonna need to be a lot of collaboration when it comes time to implementation. Um and if, you know, as we go through this in preparation for the, you know, data brief that we're gonna hand off to you guys, if you do wanna go look around and that, I leave that completely up to you. I'm not gonna give you that homework. But um if that's something that you feel would help you in in making that decision or in talking about things a little bit more, um, I think I think that's a great idea if you guys wanna do that.
I just, um, I I um, but do we have enough representatives here or enough input in order to create a plan? And I I know about planning, I know about implementing plans, um, long-term ones and continually evaluating them and adjusting and and moving forward and seeing a result. But I really think that it'd be great for us to make a beautiful plan and to cast a vision of what we think. Just what Joe is saying happens and it's just
I I I just don't know if this is kind of working a little bit without having that plan.
Um, you know, if you're trying to make those types of changes and if we do say that we wanna make um land use changes in order to allow more businesses, that's something that you want to get the planning boards buy-in well before the plan is finalized. You know, you invite them here, you have them see the plan, you give them a chance to look at it. Um and I mean, I do wanna say like this isn't a just uh this committee's plan, it's everyone's plan. We're going to go out into the public and ask for their input, so it's not gonna be created in this vacuum. Yeah.
Exactly, yeah. I did wanna get one point in there. Like, that might be, maybe like that, maybe not for, but sweep if the timing works out.
Yeah, I think that might be a good way to
Yeah, because that, that only could have existed.
Yeah, that would be, if if you wanna get me a date about when you think that might happen, we can maybe see if we can get the survey out by that time and have something like that. Um, we do have like, um, I believe we can do two or three events out in the community where we'll, you know, we'll show up with materials, we'll have an iPad there. People can take a survey in person if they want or or take a link for it, that kind of thing. Um, so we do account for those types of, you know, casual opportunities.
Good. So we had a survey, a couple of, couple of meetings. So, you know, what we're gonna do with that, but I don't know, should we share that with the staff or? Sure.
Yeah, yeah, like Joe, you sent to email, right? Like, sorry, I really involved that, I'm very involved.
That's fine, that's okay. Um
Yeah, we can share that.
And what for Um, so yes, I'll send you a copy of that survey. It was just our initial thoughts on what we would survey the local businesses here in in Dayton to say, what's important to you? What do you like about Dayton? What don't you like about Dayton?
Mm-hmm. And do you guys plan on putting that survey out when?
Well, we about it initially. And then I think we said, well, wait, let's see what you guys think. So I think that would rather
Yeah, we wanna put everything in line together.
Agreed, yeah. I I wouldn't wanna put two surveys out and compete against each other.
I agree.
But um I think I think that's a great way to get people to, you know, let them know that you're listening, let them know that you're interested in making a few changes. Um, I'm sure that'll be something that if it comes out after the plan, during the plan, that's probably something that we'll get a better sense for as we kind of get started and kick things off a little bit more.
Good, okay.
I did. Business planning and costs and taxes and a Is that actually a bigger part of businesses than the, like, what is your tax rate? What do you, you know, how do you zone? Not that those don't factor in the people coming, but I mean, is it or is that really the better way?
Describe like a percentage of what's more important. I think it all really depends on the type of town that you're in. Um, when it comes to people trying to, you know, start up a business somewhere, they wanna make sure that they can pull clients from and customers from maybe an existing location. If you're on a busy main street, yeah, you're gonna wanna put your shop there. Um, but I also think when companies are looking at, you know, starting up somewhere and and bringing their workforce there, they're looking for amenities for their employees, like is, are there things to do? Are there festivals? Are there, you know, activities? Is there a certain kind of culture that, you know, lets people have fun in their neighborhoods, um, so you don't have to travel too far to enjoy?
This is a great place to live.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So that we could, I think that's one of our strong points, right? Is that it's a great place to live.
What they envision for this town, like what their preference is in terms of types of businesses or what they want here, what they wish we had, like a coffee shop or, you know, mainstream or, you know, or do they, do they like that? You know, it that it would maybe be something more, you know, agricultural or, you know, industrial and the industrial areas, but for them, they like that it's it's calm and quiet. We don't need, you know, we have our own restaurant, that kind of thing.
You're asking residents what they wanna see because this is their community, um, and you don't wanna make changes that aren't in line with what they want to see.
Right.
Um, at the same time, if you're thinking about, you know, I think when it comes to your your point of the town of Groton survey, I always think of it as like, what is it that you want to see? And our job is really to say, okay, how can we get to that point? What kinds of things do we need to implement? What kinds of, is it the tax rate that needs to change? So asking people about, you know, what their ideal tax rate isn't really gonna tell us whether or not they're going to come. It's whether or not that's going to achieve the outcome that they want to see. Um, you know, if it's a pedestrian-friendly main street, I'm sorry, I keep coming back to main street. It's just the easiest one to envision. Um, but idea, like if you want a beautiful main street, how do you achieve that? There are a number of different ways that you could, you know, achieve that and and take it from a couple of different angles. Um, but a lot of the times, uh, we like to think of the outcome and how to get there. We're kind of that middleman of saying how you can get there.
So do
Yes, definitely.
Um, so have you seen their, uh,
No, I know you, you
So I've been there and a lot of work went into that. What I liked about that was that you set up that website that, you know, residents could go to and they, there was a map. And people could like tag an area in the map and say, I'm aware that this is conservation land. Could we put a park here?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And and the residents actually were And so it's beautiful because, you know, the the
We we have
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That that that's that's all there is. That was your return?
But that's interactive. You're saying it was interactive.
That's what we've been hoping for, we've been wishing so much for.
If you want to see that uh Rainham master plan, obviously, it's it's a much larger plan, it covers so much more. Um, but at the end of the day, the engagement methods that we use are very similar, a survey. Um, we have about using a a map, if that's something that you guys are interested in, we can see if that's something that we can budget for. Um, but I know, you know, the public engagement is centers a lot around surveys and those those Zoom meetings as well as in person now that now that it's becoming more and more common, sure.
Just two things there. When we did the master plan years ago,
twenty fourteen?
we put it all together based on trying to bring businesses in. That's what we all tried to to do. And we did it in a way that, given you my train of thought at the time, there's one thirty eight was the only people that are studying your business, they could live in the home, which a lot of people are today living in the same, uh, just the show. I I see that you're bringing up Rainham all the time. Totally different animal than what the building down there and and I that's my
I haven't seen one thirty eight for over twenty years, though I have
I'm sorry?
of business there now. You've got the, um, the, what is it, North, I can't remember. But I think things are starting to happen a little bit. I mean, um,
I don't know, but it's already developed. How much more can you do there, you know?
Right.
That's that's the thing. We did this this corner here with the only light that we have. We did it as an district, you know? But even even still, this corner was used as that. The other corner was left, the the I'm sorry?
It's all about the sewer.
The sewer, sewer.
It's all about the sewer, right?
Yes, the sewer is
Still that economy between what we want as a town, even at one major intersection, I think what you're saying. There before we can Like the type of economic development struggles we have just there is a, oh, you know, I mean, is a, oh, you know, like, like it's a really good, it's that into our challenge right now, I think, right?
Only thing on our
I'll show you the example of the challenges.
That's absolutely, yes, yes, yes.
How do we create a vision for
That we would have saved.
We're coming nowhere. Yet I don't know why I get stuck.
Way of current, that's that's
No, I think politically speaking, would you, um, you know,
I think
of variation, right? Do you think it's possible, I know the question is on the college, to put in whatever pipelines we need to
Oh.
order to, um, develop another area besides one thirty eight? But are there ever federal monies? Are there ever wars? Is it that we found that of or that we couldn't or would have part of our plan because we, I don't wanna put the word worrying, you know, I mean, I
Yeah.
This floor, uh, I've just, you know, is there money to get this done because it's
Yeah.
So yes, but if we do this like line and that we'll create an impetus and it will really create a charge where we can finally implement the recommendations made in twenty fourteen in the master plan. Well, for zoning analysis, also highlighted about a dozen sites where we could have, like, no.
Oh, it did?
Yeah, yeah, cause this, I
It's really You didn't implement the plan.
No, no, and I see this as really yeah, like in creating some energy really to do that. That's how I look at this whole.
Okay, I'm gonna write that down. So this this
I see this as an impetus really to accomplish a lot of the things what we set out to do in twenty fourteen, start to update it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be revisiting that plan. We'll take a look at those goals and strategies that you guys laid out, see how far we got um and see if there's still work to be done for them, um, and how they fit into our plan today. And, um, to your point, you mentioned capacity with water and sewer, and that does end up being a big challenge for a lot of communities. Putting it down is really expensive, um, you know, installing it is really expensive, designing is really expensive. If you get the right kind of investment or private investment, there are federal monies available to help you do that. Um, the scope of, I guess, like, what can go in there is a little bit more limited. Um, so you wanna make sure you're willing to accept what would go in there. So for example, E D A, they often go with like high-earning of wage industries, so engineering or medical labs or what have you, those types of things, manufacturing. Um, so you'd have to find the right place to put that and also to expand uh capacity for it. So a lot of things to think about. I think you need to think about where where you want to see those things, where you definitely wouldn't want to see those things. Um, and you can also think outside of just bringing in new business. Again, it's that of how we can harness what makes Dayton special, what brings people in, why do they stay here? Um, and how that contributes to our our economy here as well. It's not always just straight business.
I know, but we need to increase the tax, I think
Yeah.
Too, you know, to that point, um.
Definitely.
But one of the big things we did wanna focus on too was all that we do is like, well, we have a business on the street. It's like, what is the, I mean, and it might get down to like what way would you say, it's just how we
That that, no, that's true, that way Oh, that's, yeah. But but at the same time, the other, the other But but at the same time, the other the other option that the other uh issue that we had back in two thousand fourteen is that. One thirty eight, make believe this is one thirty eight going down here. First, I believe it's. Zone multi or mixed use. Then from there back, some areas are zone industrial, other areas are zone uh. But I I don't remember now what. I think it's mostly in industrial, residential industrial, something like that. But we were, I don't know exactly when we ended up. I to work on that and somewhere along the line we got cut off. Get exactly what we wanna, but again, the whole me to to it, but that that is one of the issues. Why we brought that up is if there was someone that wanted to come in and put a business, I'm gonna just say across the street. Back there, but if there wasn't, then they could come in and just cross, let on the house up front and then. Built a bigger business back there.
This was the parcel that look back to where you see normal, is that same parcel?
The only parcel that the only parcel that did that was where the bank is right now and. Just before the bank.
Yeah, 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 oh, yeah, yeah.
That property goes all the way up to. The type we don't.
Okay.
That's. So that's, yes, so. All that way, okay, then then we have the strawberry field is trying to uh some of this. That's that would, some of it would be doable. You have the high power of the. A lot could happen there, but uh I. Only is on right now, but tomorrow I can go in and look at that and next time we have a meeting, I'm gonna try to get a map. Kinda give everyone a uh a note. While we did, and I'll actually bring the song.
Um yeah, having measurable outcomes. Because otherwise, we're not going to know whether or not, I mean, except. Sitting here ten years later saying we need to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's definitely something we can incorporate into uh this plan.
So I have a quick question, you had um when we were talking about that interactive map, you said, well, I'll see what the budget allows. Do we have insight into what the budget for the project is or right, do you have uh um what what is the spoken budget of the project?
Okay, sorry, so um so like we have a draft, uh we have a proposed contract from Serpent, which uh which to be honest with you, I haven't even didn't look at yet. Uh but I will, I like we're going to try it, uh like I believe it's just like a general contract, which. Uh yeah, it has, so. We are talks about the fact that Serp had uh through D L T E A funding and through the minute uh include the minister's resources program.
Yeah.
Uh like what can what contributed about, um I wanna say like forty five ish thousand dollars towards the project.
Okay.
Like and then the other, um and then the other twenty five uh like would be funded through the grant that we got from the state, but we haven't yet really defined a budget and what level of what we, I don't think, have we yet.
Um I did, yes. Again, if if you need.
Alright, I'm sorry, let's.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay.
Yes, that's what you wanna implement.
Twenty fourteen master plan.
It's.
It's. Yeah, it's on the term ups, right?
Yes, okay, awesome, okay.
I think I think it's easier too, it's been, it's like, well, I think it's very thick, but the economic section is itself about like fifty pages or so on in the master.
Oh, that's.
So um I have a phone to hand this. Yeah, like uh, like from the uh so from what I sent to the uh committee, one of the things we're proposing with the areas there. Uh so one of the things I'm proposing for the month math that we meet on the twenty eighth and not the twenty first, so Serp has time to go back and do what they have to do. And that work for everybody meeting in the month now rather than the third month, which um is twenty first. Yeah, yeah, no, it'll be the twenty eighth rather than twenty.
And since we're we jumped to like uh skipping this meeting, I.
Six, is it, do you like six?
I love six.
Six is good, yep.
So very much I wanna get it.
So yeah, like so um so is there anything else? So like is there anything else that like you need from last set to take back to Serp and Alec, was that to bring back to what's the.
Nope, no, no, not at the moment, um I'll.
Okay.
Logo, we'll see what we can do uh with uh to create another kind of option and um we'll work on that data brief over the next month.
Okay.
And have that to share.
So can you have a master plan, I believe, summer, I can send it to you, but I can't.
I I think it, I think it is online, if I'm pretty sure I've seen it, so yeah, if I have any trouble, I'll let you know.
Okay. Okay.
And just for planning purposes for the agenda. Does it?
Um no, I think an hour should be fine, um we will hand off that data brief ahead of that meeting. So you'll have a chance to read through it, sit with it with coffee and like take a look at it, um so when you're here, this isn't the first time you're looking at it, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's at like nine ten.
I did, I didn't say that, um.
I think you're.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like, so yeah, like it says into the draft of the math presentation for them to get to seven days, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Oh, that's not a workshop, we have a workshop. Use a writing workshop, so this is just all in preparation for our workshop?
Yes, yes, so.
Did the actual writing occur or what happened in a workshop?
So at a workshop, we'll present kind of the information that I'm gonna share with you guys at the next meeting, we're gonna talk about kind of existing conditions in Dayton, this is where we're at. Um and kind of lay it all out there and that's when we're able to have that discussion of what do you want to see in the future, that's that visioning that we'll be doing. Um talking about potential development scenarios, is that something that someone would agree with or really disagree with, so those are the types of things that we wanna we wanna talk about with people.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it you can have a chat in the green floor, I hope.
Yeah, no, wait. So yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's real, thanks, I want a little bit of this information, so.
Yeah.
Kevin, the principal, assistant superintendent director. Is upon the student line. That's okay, we'll reach out to Kevin tomorrow. The question came up about solar array at the. Asked to contact Ed Buckley, uh by superintendent. Recently with. So at this point in time, we all. About putting canopy solely solar because there was a canopy, you know, rare soil put down because it's. Allow to say EPA and state allow for us to break that canopy.
Because you can put the product on top of. The soil that's on top of it is is holding it, you know, the grass and all of that is growing. But that should not break in any way.
This will generate income.
Absolutely.
Um the only thing, you know, how we point back once we meet with the state is to how they feel about us.
I like.
And I find it is probably.
Especially.
And we do have copies here, anybody got a copy? Ration over on the December meeting minutes.
Oh, yeah, I'm technically not a member of the committee.
All that um.
Yeah, those, yeah, those, yeah, okay.
Attendees.
Oh, yeah, and so put those present.
Attendees, that's.
Attendees, okay.
Attendees, yes.
Okay. And um. Local business.
Thank you very much.
Um and um. It's a product maybe at the moment, so. Quick, um. Or uh take a motion, that's very short.
Oh, my question. If the budget request gets submitted.
Yes, yes, yeah, so I, you know, I mentioned, I think I mentioned to uh the Dan Raff, the. Finalizing the budget um uh budget recommendations uh from the town accountant to myself that will go forward to the board of. The smart one next week, um uh the commission, uh at the last meeting, we were uh to. Um I do think a more realistic theory just. On terms of expectations would be probably, uh yeah, probably right around like a thousand, but we're like finishing and finalizing all that as we speak, so. Uh the first part of that next week, I'll 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 have an update for everybody who I think.
Okay.
It's all like your queue rolling up, but that is just, that would just be really the beginning of the process and then uh. Have the opportunity if it wants to weigh in, uh like with the board of selectmen and then the Fincom, um and then town meeting even after, like after that, but it is a very tight one.
So I believe I think that total that we asked for was in fact your mark because just as a.
That, so that budget won't be in place until July first? So I thought the funding if we were gonna make or class would be fully posted, I don't.
Real budget, so I think that might be okay. This Dayton Berkeley business event at the Aggie, um one of the things that Chris and I have been talking about is um a table, right, where you can have a, you know, I don't know, maybe we might. Chores or something, you know, a little bit about, you know, why would you be interested in having a business? And or maybe. You know, it would be nice to have something on a table that you could give people to say, you know, here's here's what Dayton's about. And that's, it doesn't need to be anything. And Berkeley businesses, a hundred people, we we've had a tour of of the.
Oh, good, okay.
Oh gorgeous. She took us around, she's willing to give tours to the participants. So student ambassadors who give the tours, um and so we're trying to really get some buzz going about, look at this gem in our community. And and it's act it's beautiful, it is beautiful. And it's act it's beautiful. It is beautiful. Um, we were thinking about having a candor, no. Uh, yeah, yeah.
One day the class seems some.
So I think they they they.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yep, yep. So we we don't even wanna miss for something crazy, right?
You can get done, but I don't.
What is it other than that one day license?
It's a one day license is a liability. So from the school, so what's the end you request it? They requested on a regular basis.
I I just I just wanna make sure that. On and with that comes, how many people do you expect? A hundred people, okay, so that you're gonna need a cop.
I have it, yeah, yeah.
And that comes six hundred bucks each, you know, and I.
Yeah.
Some of that you went to, do they have details or was all parking just assumed?
It was done by. Think about this and 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 say, hey, cut the crap, you know, we don't need that.
Just figure it out. We don't have to convince you.
There, the selectmen of the towns there, the politicians. Representatives and, you know, Mark Pacheco and, you know, those people to come and and really interact with these business owners and in in prospective businesses. Because we're still trying to figure out when we're gonna be able to fit this in. Ian, they were saying at the at the Ivy School, it would be better late May, early. So we're maybe thinking around that. That's currently the thought process. So we don't, yeah, is there, do I would want to get any input?
Oh, this sounds awesome.
Yeah, okay, so one question, because this is the first time I I mean, makes sense for you. This thing, Dyson, are we doing so? Perspective people.
Yeah, so.
Well, your race hasn't been approved. I don't need to register.
But it's still like, I mean, a lot of the team also like a realtor who can help really sell all of all of.
In bankers, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a bit higher, but with the bankers and realtors being with the Dyson now the models.
Right.
Raphael and I actually just.
Yeah, I guess that my concern is we have nowhere for that. If they get excited, I'll come in.
I'll send them right over to you and you're gonna show them.
We had that little conversation before you came, so I but we're not really concerned about, I mean, it could be a networking thing, like you said, where we're just. I mean, we could be taking down people that are interested and trying to, are we like helping them to network or to research what's available on the town? Or just keeping them up in mind if we were to implement again on the basis for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So yeah, I mean, and if it's an early June event, we're gonna have some stuff like from this already.
Exactly.
The survey in terms of probably a board as well. But at the event, we could show that even we might not, oh, you know, have the infrastructure now. Like, here's what we're looking at. Here's how we're trying to play. Here's how we're trying to be more, are we, you know, um. Are are cutting edge, so to speak, to be more welcoming and inviting.
Is this right?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that was all right, yeah.
We opened up to exciting topics in my quarter.
Yeah, I mean, it would really be the chambers event that marketed and right, I mean, we would just be there. They would, I mean, in terms of how they were marketed, I mean, I would imagine on on like on 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 their list of realtor developers, bankers.
Yes.
Anyway, so.
And it will be a website where anybody can go register. So if you have someone that you think would be interested in joining or attending, you'll send them, you know, a, you know, an email.
You're you're.
Because we're gonna send it out to all like three hundred, I just fifty people.
I just want everyone to think about the fact that every developer, housing developer, that comes then. When I raise our taxes a little.
Right, yes.
So I just want to.
So wait a second, I'm not the one that you're what kind of looking at this direction, but I'll 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 look for.
Don't think so much we can do.
It's hours to call.
Right, you know, so um and it would be a little bit difficult to be a little bit discriminant generally, right? I mean, so I don't I don't wanna say that we wouldn't wanna hope that we wouldn't that we.
Can you say it? I wanna have the expectation stood that like it wouldn't be the commission's event, so to speak, it would be the chambers.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. And we're giving you.
You know where we're going.
So you have my next.
Oh, that, oh, I wasn't even thinking that one.
Government's more complicated because it's a board.
Yes, yes, but if they go.
I see if there are those issues because they just have a need for that. Yeah, okay.
I'll make the motion to.
What are we?